Calling the June General Government Meeting to Order. First up, we need approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion and support? Motion by Snell, supported by Willis. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Motion passed. We have public comment. Any public comment today? Any public comment? Apparently, we don't have any right as the president. We'll have another opportunity at the end. Next, we move on to item four, our minutes. We need a motion and support to approve our minutes from last month. Motion by Snell, supported by Willis. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The same. Passes unanimously. Next up, we have the Clerk and Register of Deeds Historical Platt Preservation Issue. Thank you. Welcome, Sierra.
Thank you. While I play multiple roles here today, thank you for your patience. So, yes, I have a historical plat preservation project in front of you today. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to speak. I'm here to request your support in the preservation of our county's historical plats. These are not just old maps. They're irreplaceable records that tell the story of how our communities were formed. These documents hold immersed historical, legal, and cultural value. They show how land divisions were divided, property boundaries, ownership patterns, and development trends that are foundational to understanding our local history. These plats are aging rapidly. I did bring some for you to view. I know many of you have looked at them already today. I will leave them throughout this meeting. They are housed on fragile paper, deteriorating film, in some cases are at risk of being lost forever due to damage, fading, or lack of proper archival storage. Once they're gone, we cannot get them back. And with them, we lose a piece of our heritage. Our goal is to preserve, re-digitize, and properly archive these plats to protect them for the future generations. Doing so will increase accessibility to the public, researchers, surveyors, and government staff. Instead of digging through our physical archives and getting those books out, they'll be able to view high-resolution, quality images, saving time, preserving originals, and improving our service and delivery to our constituents. This is a modest investment compared to a long-term benefit, and it safeguards our legal and historical integrity, supports transparency, and reflects our shared commitment to responsible stewardship of these public records. In Michigan, it's a statute requirement for original plat records to be kept in good working order under items 3.200, 3.225, 3.260 in the Register of Deeds General Retention Schedule. This funding will come from Automation Fund, which is allowed under MCL 600.2568. The total of this request is $449,845, which would be split into six projects. The Register of Deeds deposits $5 in each recording fee into this Automation Fund, and that current balance is $715,000. I respectfully ask for you to approve this and support this in our project moving forward, and welcome the opportunity to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, Board? Darius, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a noncommittee member of this committee, I do just have just one question as it relates just to the funding source. I wasn't familiar with this. Could you just elaborate on that?
Yes. The Automation Fund is, like I said, $5 of every recording fee goes specifically into this fund. This was established many years ago. The purpose of this fund is to upgrade technology, make accessibility to records more available to the public, whether that be through technology and preserving those plats and maps, and, like I said, upgrading those images that we currently have. As you can see over on our books, there's tape that is marked over many of these documents, and this preservation project will safely remove some of that tape if that document, that page, is able to do that. So, we are able to digitize, re-digitize, and have a clear image for the public to see. And this fund does allow for that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Nothing further, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Darius. Any further questions? Straightforward, I need a motion and support to move this ahead.
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Willis. Or Snell approved, seconded by Walls. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The same. Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we'll move on to the semi-
Semi-annual report next.
Yes. So, in the Clerk's office, as you know, we oversee many different divisions, including our Court Services Division, which takes in all Fourth Circuit Court filings for civil claims over $25,000, all criminal felony cases, domestic cases regarding divorce, paternity, custody, support, personal protection orders, delinquency, juvenile, abuse neglect, and business court cases. So, before you, I have a year-to-date, as well as a end-of-year 2024 recap of what our court case filings look like. We are on par, I believe, for year-to-date for us to meet our pretty standard, over 3,500 cases per year. But if you look down at our circuit court case pleadings, in 2024, we were at a significant number of 124 pleadings we received, 392 pages. And again, those are pages and paper documents that the 6.75 staff that I have are physically touching, taking in from the windows, taking from mail, from fax machine. We have physical paper. And we are docketing them. We are then scanning them in, and then we are also putting them in a paper file. So, just to let you know, this is an enormous amount of work. And my staff does an absolute amazing job staying up the best they can. So, our numbers look pretty standard in restitution. In 2024, we paid out $155,000, almost $156,000, to 577 victims. Year-to-date, 62,000 with 190 victims paid. Again, you can look over our birth certificate numbers, deaths on my vital side, CPLs, marriage licenses, those instances. As far as interesting things that we have done in the Clerk's office recently is, this past spring, we participated in a project where we had eighth graders across the Jackson County come into the courthouse building to learn more about what each job entails and what the career path looks like for that, what education, what kind of experience. And the Clerk's office did something a little bit unique, is we got our voting machines out. And in addition to talking about education and experience, we had eighth graders do a mock election. And so, as you can imagine, they had write-in some pretty unique names. LeBron James was one of them, was winning as governor. Taylor Swift was a strong competitor in school board race as well. So, that was a great amount of fun that we participated in. And we received the feedback surveys from those schools. That was the most enjoyable part of their stop with the courthouse, was voting. So, I'm happy to also educate them on voting rules. As you know, I'm pretty strict when I talk about elections. So, that did not change for students. And then also, something else that I just wanted to point out, receive some fun correspondence from students as well, from middle schoolers all across the state. They do these projects where they're interested in other counties. And so, I get to write back to these students, which is pretty fun. Any questions so far?
Questions on anything here, Board?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for your report.
All right. Let me get my things together.
Need a motion and support to receive?
Move to receive the report.
Motion to receive by Walls, supported by Willis. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The same. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Board. Next up, we have the Treasurer. Welcome, Karen.
Good morning. All right. So, it's that time of year, quarterly report for June. And I sent off a packet of information, just with some statistics for you. The first portion of my report, I just want you to be aware of all the efforts that we do in our office to work with people to prevent foreclosure from happening. The two main vehicles for that is, every January, we hold what's called a show cause hearing. That's the first opportunity that people who are experiencing concerns about not being able to pay their taxes can come speak to us about their situation. And at that point in time, we work with them. Sometimes, and most often, it's granting an extension, which is just time. But when there are resources that fit their story and their circumstance and their situation, we do our very best to try to connect people with those services, all with the intent to prevent foreclosure from happening. So, there's just some statistics from the show cause hearing that we had in January. And then, in February, we have our judicial foreclosure, which is basically the second opportunity for taxpayers to, in this case, go before the circuit court judge and talk to the judge about their circumstances. The judge then, excuse me, can make a determination whether or not to grant an extension. And again, that's just time, time to pay. So, these numbers are pretty standard. Historically, we are right around these levels each year. But I just wanted to make you aware of those are some of the efforts that we do every year to work with people. Talking about foreclosures, March 31st has come and gone, and we ended up with 91 parcels. If you look at the graph on the next page, that's pretty standard as to where we are. Last year, we were at 89 parcels. And it's important to state for the record that not all of these parcels are people in houses. A lot of what we deal with is vacant lots. And you'll see on the second graphic, we do the breakdown for you that shows in the city, the improved parcels. And when we say improved, that means structures. So, it could be a trailer. It could be a burnt-out house. It could be a house that's occupied. It could be a house that a renter is in. So, when we say improved, that's what we mean, that there's a structure or house where people are residing. Vacant, obviously, self-explanatory. So, you'll see the breakdown there. And it's, again, falling right in the same pattern as in years past. But it's important to note that it's not all of these 91 parcels where we're displacing people from homes. You'll see that we did report out 10 structures were condemned, which means they're sitting there in either burnt-out or disrepair. They don't have water. Their roofs could be caving in. That we have a whole myriad of issues when we encounter the parcels. So, those are just a few. And then 13, just 13 of those parcels were occupied. And then, lastly, I just want to update. Lots of activity going on at the two former Mitchner sites. The one on Mechanic Street, as you know, is a super fun site. They have been doing ongoing sampling every month for the past, I think, year, year and a half now. So, there's lots of ongoing activity at that site. Most recently, the EPA was there, just last month, for removal and evaluation of some shingles that had fallen. And they are doing some testing on that as well. Angling Avenue is a little bit different, an empart site. And they are just continuing to drill wells for ongoing sampling as well. And then, just a quick snapshot as to where we are with the new cycle of parcels going into the forfeiture cycle, we're at just over 1,000 parcels. And that's a little bit high as compared to last year, but it is what it is. So, if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Board, do we have any questions? John?
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, I want to say we really appreciate your office and your staff that has helped a lot of people that we've had. Reach out to them every single time they really extended themselves and made sure they received the help that they need. Do you have a sheet or a marketing piece, a one-page or something, that actually tells what you do in those situations or how people can reach out to you for those?
Well, I have kind of notes that I keep in my office. And if you're talking about resources to offer those people that come to us, it's ever-changing. But I can certainly send you something. It's not something that we distribute on a regular basis. But, you know, we tell people, Saint Vincent de Paul, work with your religious institutions. It was great last year and the year before that we had federal funding and state funding, but those monies have dried up. So, there's nothing really at the state level at this point in time. But I can certainly share that information with you, and I'll put it on my to-do list because that does make sense. It's ever-changing, though, obviously, depending on funding that's available for resources.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair.
And I did want to do one more update. I just made a note here as our clerk was speaking. I wanted to bring to all of your attention that we are working in partnership with the Clerk's office. She has elections in her office, and part of that is campaign finance. And if you're running for an office, an elected position, you are responsible for reporting those campaign finance fees, reports. She knows more about it than I do. But having said that, the Elections Department had some delinquent or unpaid campaign filing fees. And so, we're working with them. And I've had our attorney send a notice to those parties and peoples that were delinquent in their campaign finance fees. And we also have several small claims court cases pending. So, they weren't able to collect on their end, so they turned it over to our office. And we act as the collecting agent. So, we're working in tandem with them. And hopefully, we can get, I think we've got two left outstanding that has not been paid.
Yes.
Okay. And so, hopefully, we'll have a good turnout from our small claims court to get those delinquent fees paid. But I just wanted to let you know, there's lots of things that I don't necessarily report out, but we work very closely with the Clerk's office on a lot of different things.
I'm not sure who I'd want after me if I owed money, you guys or the mafia?
I wouldn't use that word, but we're pretty strong. We're pretty strong. We know how to go about it, so.
Thank you. Any further questions? Mike, go ahead.
Karen, could you give us an update on Raffaelli and all that debacle?
Oh, boy.
Yeah, please. I think it's necessary. I know a lot of it's been resolved. But last we spoke, I understood there was an element that you believe we still have some risk potential there.
Absolutely.
Would you describe that for us, please?
Well, that's a loaded question, and I could spend quite a bit of time talking about it. I don't want to get too into the weeds. Well, and again, this is a moment in time, right? Because there are many cases still pending and going through the court systems, state and federal, circuit court, court of appeals, you name it. So, what we're dealing with right now is the ripple effect, I guess I would say, from the Raffaelli decision. And I think most prominent for me right now is the concern about, the law allows for local units of government to take properties or purchase properties under their first right of refusal. That can be a sticky situation now because of the Raffaelli decision. If, and I said most recently in our land bank meeting, if I, as the county treasurer, deny a person's ability to recoup equity in a property that they've lost to tax foreclosure, that opens up liability and concern and risk for whomever is doing that. So, it could be on the county treasurer. It could be on the entities that take the properties under their first right of refusal. That also includes the county. If the county decides to exercise their right of first refusal, that opens up the potential for liability and being sued because you're denying that former homeowner or property owner the ability to realize equity if the property is sold at public auction. So, that's just one component of it. We're seeing land banks now being brought into litigation because of the same, if they take properties and not allowing the person the opportunity to regain some proceeds from the sale of their property.
If I may interrupt, when you say "not allowing," I thought, I'm backing up here just a second. Supreme Court ruled against the case and said, you know, we have to allow them or pay them for that difference or what have you. But when you take it to auction, they are allowed now by law, right, to bid on it?
That's correct.
So, prior to that, the previous owner could not buy the property at auction.
That is correct.
But now, the law allows them to buy it at auction. So, I would argue that we aren't necessarily taking anything. We're saying, hey, we're taking our taxes. You owe us. You have an opportunity to buy at auction. If you lose, you lost. Or no?
Well, that depends. That's what the court has to make a decision on. So-
I thought they had.
There's still cases that are pending. Wayside Church out of Van Buren County, they're doing a west side of the state settlement. We're now dealing with the Fox being an eastern side of the state settlement. So, it's hard to say with clarity that that is going to remain the statement because there's so many cases that are running through the system right now.
When do you think that, any sense at all, when that might clear up? Because in the meantime, it's clear as mud, and a lot of counties are concerned that they may be hit with some large judgment, millions down the road, so.
Indeed. And another component of that, if that is the case and the county does get hit with fees or paying back proceeds, there could be the ripple effect or the effect of chargebacks on the local units of government as well. And I'm just speculating. There's nothing set in stone right now because it's a moving target. So, it's hard, I can give you where we are right now, but I don't have a crystal ball to say what's going to happen and how the judges and the courts are going to rule. We're watching it very diligently. Our County Treasurers Association statewide. We have bi-monthly meetings, and we get updates from our legal counsel. So, we're watching it. We have been watching it since 2020.
And if we were to receive an adverse judgment against us for millions, we would basically borrow the money to pay the-
Well, that would be a decision for the Board to make.
Well, if you don't have the money, you're pretty much out of choice. And then, pay it back over time. Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Karen, on that same topic, there was a cutoff date, I believe, when the law went into effect. And aren't we kind of going by year by year, timing out and erasing some exposure by timeout?
No. So, we have the Raffaelli decision that came out in July of 2020. Most recently, we have the Schaefer decision that came out of Kent County. The Schaefer decision basically allowed any tax-foreclosed person or entity to file a claim for remaining proceeds. That window has now closed. So, we have two sets of claims, the one that happens each year. So, for the 2025 foreclosures, parcels that we just did, March 31st, that's one set of claims. And that follows what the statute says and the timelines and the deadlines for the claimant to file the necessary paperwork with the court system. That's one set of claims. Now, we also have the Schaefer claims, different form, different claimant process. And we will now be sending notices out, so it would be anything 2020 and older, so retroactive, claims come into play. And that's a little worrisome because I think that could potentially be a larger number. But until we get through the deadlines and the timeline as it relates to those batch of claims, I can't give you a solid number as to what we're looking at as far as exposure.
How far back does Schaefer go?
We have claims back to 2011, 2010.
Well, I realize we have claims way back. I didn't know if they had left it totally open.
They left it totally open.
So, it's not just, you know, seven years. It could be 14 or whatever.
That is correct.
Oh, my. Okay.
Go ahead, Steve.
Has the court system done any punitive payments from anybody? Put adverse penalties, other than giving the money back plus interest?
Are you saying that claimants getting the proceeds?
So, if I, let's just walk through. So, I'm in 2012. I lost my house. $1,000 was the value of the piece of property. The back taxes to be paid on it were $250, so the net proceeds would have been $750. We amortized that from 2012 to 2025. During that time period, has there been any punitive assessments against those people or against the counties or state for taking those properties? And if there's not been, that would mean we could do an amortization report and come up with an exact bill on what each outstanding piece of property would be, so then we would know what our debt would be, correct?
Yes. But I will say, we work with our contract company Title Check. They work with 70-some counties in the state of Michigan. They're already providing that information from us. In fact, they're getting ready to send out the first notice to those Schaefer claimants at the end of this month. And they have all of the auction information stored in their database because they've done our auctions from the beginning. So, they have that information. So, they can take what the value or what the minimum bid, which is the taxes that were due, right? And they have the information of what is sold at auction and what the possible potential proceeds, remaining proceeds, would be or not be. And it can be either way, depending on the parcel.
Correct. So, that means we have a finite number of what we possibly could owe, and we could calculate that-
Yes.
-and then only have to hold in escrow that amount of money. We wouldn't have to have an excessive amount of money held in escrow because there are no punitive damages being filed against anybody.
Ideally, that is the case, yes.
Have there been any punitive damages?
There have not, that I'm aware of.
Okay. And when it comes to punitive damages, our insurance, if I'm not mistaken, Mike, after it gets over $100,000, is going to pay for that, correct? You don't believe so?
I know. I don't think so.
You believe punitive damages would be held against the county without our insurance?
I'd have to double-check, but I don't believe those kind of awards would be the case. No, I'd have to look. That's a new window. That's a new area of insurance. I don't know how the insurance company has responded to that. I've not heard anything otherwise.
Nor have I. This is all new territory.
But on the nature of what Steve's question there is, I appreciate, you know, doing the math, but my question then becomes, but how far back do you go? I mean, the county's been around for a long time. We're going back 100 years?
No, Mike, you don't have to do that. You only have to go back to the decision of when we started this process.
No, that's-
No, sir. Prior to that, the state of Michigan did all the foreclosures, and the property went to the DNR. No, no, sir. Prior to that, prior to that, the state of Michigan did all the foreclosures and the property went to the DNR.
So how far back is that?
2006.
Oh, that's 20 years.
Well, Public Act 123 of 1999 is actually the foreclosure law.
Started, but we didn't start doing the full program until after it had been going for a while.
Our little handy dandy chart here shows 2002 was the first, first year.
So we got a few years' exposure.
Yes. Yes.
And how many properties do we have still inside that foreclosure window?
Which foreclosure window?
You're talking about between 2002 and today. Is every property eligible?
Yes.
So you're saying ones that you've already paid on for Raffaelli are now eligible to go back and bill you again?
They won't double dip. No, I've not
So then you can delete all of those?
Well, we only had, we've only had a small number of claims that we've paid out to date.
How many, how many properties do we have liable for claims still? No, no. She says she's paid claims on some and others have been, been taken care of throughout the court system. My question is, how many actual properties do we have that we could possibly get in trouble with?
I have a court date next week for the 2024 foreclosure and there are six claims for that year. For 2025, it just happened. They have until May 15th to do the filing, May 15th of next year to do the filing, so I don't have numbers for that. Anything related to the Schaefer, we had 113 claims.
So we had 113 claims. How many of those are actually eligible to get, receive payments?
That's up to the judge to determine. The county treasurers do not get involved in that. The law is very clear on that.
Well, if they've, if those properties of those 113 were already Raffaellied, then those people wouldn't be eligible. You've already said you can't double dip, so you can delete those. How many of those are removed?
If they've, they've not been paid out. So it's their opportunity to claim if there are proceeds available.
If I may, Steve, I'm, I'm a little confused now because I thought Raffaelli was determined, decided, and when was that? What was that date?
Raffaelli was July of 2020.
2020. So 2020 to current, we had, those cases have either been paid or processed or their window is closed. It was, the Schaefer case was from 2020 to the past.
Yes.
Is only what's eligible. So not the Raffaelli cases, the ones in the past.
They're separate, yes.
Yeah, they're separate. So it's from 2002 to 2020. Those 18 years is what I think Shaw was asking about, is what does that add up to and what's that potential liability?
I don't have those numbers.
No, I understand, but
Right, 113 claims.
Is that what that 18 years has, 113 claims?
Yes.
Okay, so we, we can get a number for that. You can get me a number for that, right?
Of course.
Thank you.
Stephen, are we done? I mean, it's a good debate. I ordered a lot there. Conversation. Yo, she's
So I think we should look to have a meeting after we have a solid number for those particular claims. Because again, there's responsibility on the claimant to make sure that they're following how the law says that they need to file on such and such date and meet those deadlines. If they don't meet those deadlines, then they lose their opportunity.
But the attorneys with the Schaefer case are sending a notice to every one of those 113 people. Is that who it is? But that's who's doing it?
We have sent notices out.
We did. Okay, so
We have sent notices. I'm sure there are attorneys that are, are working with these
Working too.
Claimants, definitely.
The judge has ruled that the counties have to send back, go back and notify those people. Is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for the treasurer?
It does. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We need a motion of support to receive? Motion by Snell, supported by Walls. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. Go on to item E, MMPC update. Welcome, Brett.
Hi. Good morning, everyone. So my name is Brett Gates. I'm here with the Region Two Planning Commission to give an update on the Materials Management Planning Committee. So this committee, we started meeting in February, so there hasn't been a whole lot that's happened so far, but I'll give you kind of a brief rundown of what we have done. So first, we kind of established meeting times and dates. So those who are wondering, we meet the second Wednesday of each month at 9:00 a.m. right here in the chambers. And so one of the first things we did was approve some priorities for the committee. That was just some, kind of just some goals to establish that we hope to get done through the plan. And another thing we did was establish bylaws for the committee and got those approved. And then kind of the big thing we've done is establish the 2025 work plan. We got that approved back in May and that was sent on to Eagle and it's currently in the approval process. But basically what this does is this gets us our grant money. It gets the county their grant money for the plan so they can do it. And in this plan, there's a kind of schedule of tasks to get done. And we'll kind of use this as the baseline for what we plan to do with the committee. So yeah, that's kind of it so far. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions, Board? I don't have any yet. Mike, go ahead.
But I was just going to clarify. We're eligible for the money, but it's a reimbursement, correct? So we spend the money, then they, we apply for reimbursement.
Yeah, I believe it's, so they give a grant amount and then I believe that gets awarded to the county.
Well, it was, it was like $60,000 they were giving us, but not given us, that we're eligible for reimbursement. So your time, anytime we spend money on it, we can get reimbursed is how I understood it. I don't know if that had changed or if you'd heard anything different.
So I know in this plan, like, we had to write up a budget of kind of what our estimated expenses were for this. So that came out to $135,000 is what we had applied for. So there might be additional funding that also gets reimbursed. I believe that'd probably be the work that's been done so far.
Yeah, if I recall, it was, there was an upfront $60,000 that you were eligible for. And then there was, it was like 50, 50 cents on the, on the head. So in our case, it would be another, what, you know, what's, you know, eight, $80,000 a year is what we're eligible for.
Okay, yeah.
What I think it is. Thank you.
Okay. Has anybody got any more questions? Need a motion of support to receive?
So moved.
Motion, motion by Walls, supported by Willis. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Next up, we have IT. Welcome, Ben.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we have come to the point in the life cycle on our firewall, which is basically the device that acts as the gateway between our network and the outside world of the internet. It's the first line of defense on any sort of things coming in from the outside. It looks at any connections coming in, matches it against the rules that we set up in our engineering and our other processes. And based on that, it's going to determine whether or not it's going to allow that traffic through. So it is a very critical piece when it comes to cybersecurity. And the one we have today is definitely getting hammered with things all day, every day. Most of it is pretty trivial. They're not directed attacks, but it's something that always has to be there and be in place. The current one is five years old, is approaching end of life, which is going to happen in 2028. So rather than look at just renewing the, the maintenance and software licensing fees for the remainder of its lifespan, due to the cost and the utilization and the size of the box versus how we're using it, we looked at alternatives to see if there was a more efficient way of providing the services. Basically what we came out to after some research and meetings with vendors is we could step down in the size of the box that we were using and actually get two boxes for redundancy to where we don't have a single point of failure at that connection standpoint and keep the cost total, in total, lower than what we're paying right now. So in looking at that, we sought quotes from a few different vendors. And Cisco came in with the cheapest cost over a five-year lifespan of the initial contract. And that is at, the total cost for the five years is $37,039.39. And that works out to at an annual level about a third of the cost that we pay right now for services. Have we taken any questions?
Questions, Board? Which number? I, I had a question here. One was the cost of the program. It looked like they're charging so much a year for maintenance.
Yep. So the, the one we have today, the initial purchase of the, of the hardware was done back in 2020. And every year, we have a maintenance and support agreement on it that we pay. And so right now, that cost is approximately $25,000 a year and it's estimated to go up over the next couple of years. So what we're going to do with this proposal is pay a one-time fee that's going to cover us for the full five years. So that $37,000 covers the hardware for the new boxes and the license and subscription and maintenance for the next five years. So this will take us through 2030.
It does save considerable money. Okay. Any questions, Board? Do we have a motion or support? A motion? I have a motion of support to forward to the full board this proposal that will cost $37,039.39. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have facilities. Welcome, Pat.
Good morning. How are you? Good morning, commissioners. Back in August, we worked with a company called Restore Consulting to complete a structural assessment of the armory wall. The wall was constructed in 1924 and completed in 1934. And the wall is battered. The mortar joints need to be filled, stabilized, loose stone and brick. Restore was able to develop a structural assessment of the wall along with a report of recommendations and assessment, estimated cost of construction. When we, from there, we ended up taking that report and we worked with CoPro and we developed a bid package and posted it on the county website. And we had four contractors submit a bid with Brickworks coming in with the lowest bid of $245,030.32. We're asking for, we could use available funding from the capital improvements funds. Any questions?
Okay, questions, Board? Go ahead, Commissioner Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, looking at the four bids, there's a huge difference between the bids. I know we're, we like the lowest bid. Is it going to be comprehensive enough in those repairs to get what needs to be done?
Yes.
Okay. Can you, can you tell me why there's such a discrepancy there?
On the bids?
We're looking at this bid at 223 and the next lowest bid is 318 and the high bid is 584.
Yeah, yeah, no, I totally understand. When we, our project manager worked with Restore and basically a lot of these different companies, the ones with the higher bids basically just had their different price estimates and are larger companies compared to what Brickworks is. And that's why there's such a discrepancy.
And then I also see an alternative items. Are those things that need to be done or?
That's, that's, we, we basically went ahead and we wanted to go with the whole considered package, the phases one, two, and then the alternative. But the, basically the, on the alternative ones, they went by basically just by, if you're looking at it, so much for like square footage, that kind of stuff, price. And we really won't know that until they start into the project. So, but we would like to go ahead and hopefully be able to, be able to get that done also, the alternatives.
So we can probably expect that this project will cost more than what this bid is.
We did, I, we did also ask for a 5% contingency for concealed on their, on the concealed, the conditions, and that would be part of that alternative. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Do we have a reference on this brick layers?
We don't, but I could get you one.
There's quite a difference.
Yes.
Never walk away from it, but I'd like to know where
Sure.
Could be taken care of. Okay, have a motion and support?
I'll support it.
Go ahead, Tony. Don't get crazy at me.
Thank you, Phil. I see your construction dollars. I see your contingency. Contingencies are always good to have in projects. At the end of projects, we never get a report back on was the contingency used and what, what was it used for? So it's just a request. When this project is done and you've paid the final bills, will you come back here and tell me how many dollars of this contingency were used legitimately and why?
Sure.
I'm going to start asking that question with every contract because we all have contingencies, but we never get a report back at the end, so.
Yeah, makes sense.
Give that to me. I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, will do.
John Willis has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A quick question. So like in their bids and their scope of work, did they, did they define what that work included? For example, the one I'm looking at is the repairing the laminating sandstone. The top three are pretty much all in the same $50,000 range, but the brickwork is at $11,000. Is that the scope of work similar or?
Yes, yeah. Restore went ahead and they're, they're the ones that kind of went up like what they, came up with the estimated job or the, the scope of the work and then allowed each contractor to utilize that scope of the work. And then they, they determined on their end, basically how they would do that scope of work, material, time, labor, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
That makes sense.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
What's the Board's pleasure? Okay, okay. Okay, we need a, we have a motion and support? Okay. All in favor indicate by saying, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Next up, we have finance. Welcome, Lydia.
Good morning. So the first thing on the agenda for me is to go over the April 2025 financial statements. The benchmark is at 33.3%. The expenditures as of April at 34.6%, but I'll point out some explanations in a sec, in a moment. And then our year-to-date revenue percent is 18.9% and the three-year average is at 17.4. So we're a little bit above our three-year average for our revenue, which is good. Whenever we turn the page on the revenues, everything is coming in as, as expected. On page three with the expenditures, I do have some notes next to a couple of line items where it's over the 33.3%. For example, the MSU extension, that just includes a second quarter payment, which kind of looks like they're over budget, but they're not. The Channer Road Storage Facility, the utility is at 51%. I did look into that to, to find out why utilities are so much higher compared to '24. And it was determined that there was a pump that was running continuously. They have since fixed that, but the utilities were just continuously going. So that has been resolved and has been fixed. So it is part of my budget amendment, which I will share in a moment. The other, the veterans burial claims. The other, the veterans burial claims, right now, they're at ninety, ninety percent has been expended, but that's just because they have a one, once-a-year fee for flags. And then, our miscellaneous non-departmental, that just includes our liability insurance, which we have to pay upfront, which, which looks like it's over budget, but it's not. Same, that also includes our transfers out for our debt service payments. Are there any questions?
Board, do we have any questions? If not, I need, you want some mic? Okay. Need a motion in support to receive? Okay, we have a motion in support. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, Cecilia?
All right. The next thing I would like to ask for the Board to approve and move forward is the budget amendment for the general fund, increasing the revenues and expenditures by three-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-and-three-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. The reason why, if you're, so this would be increasing our marijuana taxes and fees revenue, and also our local community stabilization act on the revenue side. And then, on page two of the budget amendment, it lists all the different line items that it would be affected. Primarily, it's our worker compensation line in our benefit section. The workers' compensation is just a lot higher than we anticipated for twenty-five than was for twenty-four for various reasons and claims. And then, there's also maintenance of equipment and grounds that we're also increasing. All right, is there any questions?
Any questions, Board? There are no questions, we need a motion in support to receive?
Support.
And forward to the full board. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Next up, we have the fair. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Emily Thomas, the Assistant Parks and Fair Director. So, we'll jump right on in here. For the last six months, kind of what have we been up to for the fair? In end of January, we wrapped up a candlelight concert on the second floor here in this building, which is a fundraiser for the fair in a partnership with the JSO, so the sympathy right down the street there. Those are great events. If you haven't had a chance to attend, I'd highly encourage it. And again, that is a fundraiser for the fair. Next, in March, we held the Fourteenth Annual Southern Michigan Winter Beer Festival, and we saw the second-largest attendance that we've had since we started that fourteen years ago. So, super encouraging to see that continuing to grow, and that was also a fair fundraiser that supports all of our premium accounts for any live animal entries, also our still exhibits. And then, into April, we held a Project Red, which is a partnership with the Farm Bureau, and that is when over fifteen-hundred third graders come to the fairgrounds and get up close and personal with animals or different things in agricultural. So, they might learn about pollinators and bees, their goats and sheeps, holding goats for their first time, or understanding where their milk comes from. So, that's just a really cool day, and it's so fun to see all the kids light up and go throughout the barns and kind of really get a good handle on what agricultural is and where their food's coming from. And then, some improvements that our maintenance team has been busy doing. We've had some barn doors and windows repaired on some horse barns. Thanks to the Men's Garden Club, we've had a new PA system go in into our livestock and our barn areas as well to help communicate different announcements that are needed. Our catch basin was, or is getting restored here soon. And then, we got an M.D.R.D. grant last year for some new bleachers. So, always trying to make sure with what we do have that we can invest it back into the grounds to make sure that they stay beautiful. So, that's kind of what we've been doing. So, now, what are we planning for, for the fair? So, our fair is August third through the ninth this year, and I'll jump into kind of what you guys can expect to see. So, for our grandstand shows, we have Sunday, the Twisted P Rodeo coming, and then Monday is All Things Horses. Tuesday is a Gone to Paradise, a live entertainment with the Jimmy Buffett experience. And then, Wednesday is our micro wrestling. Friday is the tractor pole and truck poles, and Saturday is our Demo Derby. Those are all ticketed events in the grandstand. And then, some free activities that we have on the grounds that we always try to make sure we have as much as we can for families to come in and enjoy that are free. There's no cost to them to participate in these things. So, we have the Foam Zone, which is one of the sought-after things in the fair industry to have them come, and we were able to get them for this year, so super excited for that. So, it'll be pretty foamy at the fair this year. And then, we have our Jurassic Kingdom Dinosaur Show, which is just a live, or not truly live, but a dinosaur exhibit for kids to enjoy, and it will be a show, but then they also have a time where you can just go up and interact closely with dinosaurs. And then, Gizmo, our robot, which is a strolling act, and he will literally be driving around, interacting with our fairgoers, and kind of a moving billboard is how he sold it to us. We can point him into our exhibit buildings, into the event center, into the grandstand, check out our vendors. We can have him kind of focus on getting people to the barns or to our grandstand shows. Wherever we need at any given time, he can kind of be a moving billboard and really help spread that word. So, we're excited to have him there. His name is Gizmo, if you have the opportunity to meet him. And then, next, we have our new playground that actually just opened, soft opening Friday, and we're going to kind of get a grand opening out for this week, an agricultural playground there to kind of tie in the whole theme, but also make the fairgrounds more of a park three-hundred-and-sixty-five days. Our bounce house area inside the event center, and then our Keely Stage, which is where we have one of our most exciting things for everybody is Elvis. And then, we have different magic shows, reptile shows, Senior of the Year Award, different things on that stage. All of those are free activities for families to enjoy. And then, something new this year that we are implementing that we're really excited about is theme days. So, every year, we've always had our, some key theme days, and we're really trying to expand this and make sure we have all seven days as a theme, just to kind of build some more excitement around the fair. So, Sunday, our opening day is our agricultural day. We thought what better way than to start the fair by going back to our grassroots and really what makes up the fair and focusing on the agricultural side of things. So, we'll have a farmer's market, livestock show and tell, maybe some line dancing and some other fun activities. Monday is Senior Day, so all senior citizens get in free, and of course, Elvis will be there. Tuesday is Tropical Tuesday or our parrot head, and that's all to go off of our Jimmy Buffett Tribute Band that we'll be having. So, Island Tire is encouraged, hula hoop contests, and some margaritas. And then, Wednesday, we have our superhero day. So, this is for our first responders, will get in free to our local community. And then, we'll encourage all the kids to come dressed up as their favorite superhero, and we had one of our vendors jump on board to giving out some free snow cones if they come dressed as their favorite superhero, and just kind of honoring our local superheroes as they play such a huge role for us here. Thursday is our Veterans Day. All veterans get in free. Friday is our Industrial Day, so celebrating our local industries. Jackson is such an industrial-driven town that we want to recognize them and bring them into the fair. And then, Saturday is our Kids' Day, and we'll have all different characters come to visit. As you can see there, Mickey and Minnie Mouse, maybe some Paw Patrol characters, maybe Bluey. All the big ones will be coming. So, that is something new that we're going to implement. And then, to kind of wrap up the end of it, we have our premium book, which going into fair and kind of learning and understanding everything, this was something I was really naive to, that you could enter in a cookie or your artwork that you did or your needlework that you do. So, this is something that anybody can take advantage of. Any hobby that they have, they most likely can enter it and get a premium for it and also get judged on that. And that's where beer fest revenues come in and pay these premiums, in addition to all of your livestock animals that you can enter as well. And then, we also partner with 4H4 though, so in combination of all of those, we see over forty-eight hundred exhibitors coming in and entering something, which is an awesome thing and something that Jackson County really should be proud of. It's one of the higher entries amongst our state that fairs are seeing. So, that's a really cool thing there. And then, just to wrap it up, mapping out the magic, there'll be a few new things you guys will be able to see this year when you come. We're going to have a new location for the hospitality tent, the bingo tent, and some other things. So, the layout will pretty much look the same. All of the key food vendors will be in the same spots and all that, but there will be a few tweaks around the fairgrounds. And then, the most exciting thing so far that I'm excited for is we are going to offer free parking this year. We were able to get two sponsors to jump on board to make this possible for our community. The cumulative price for fairgoers has kind of gotten to be a lot, so we were like, how can we offset that? And free parking was something that we could do, and Experience Jackson and Art Maine jumped right on board with that. So, we're super excited to offer that. We think just seeing the word free is going to be a huge thing for our community and hopefully get lots of people to come in and enjoy the fair. And with that, that's all I have. Any questions?
Questions, Board? If not, I need a motion in a second to receive?
So moved.
We have a motion in support. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Thank you much. Passes unanimously. Next up, we have parks. Welcome, Kyle.
Thank you. Good morning. Just I'll highlight some things that we've had going on in the last six months, some things that are currently in the works. I'll start first with our trail project that we're working on, basically from Monroe Avenue with the city limits up to the prison through Blackman Township. So, this, you know, we've been talking about this project for a few years, so it's, it's feels great to get it underway, construction moving along here. So, it's just under three miles. Feels a really significant gap in our local trail system. We pretty much have a trail from Concord all the way to the eastern edge of the county border, and it's also part of the Great Lake, the Lake Trail, so from, from Lake Michigan to Lake Huron. So, great regional trail and then great statewide trail, which is, you know, being part of the statewide trail network, that's, that's how we were able to get just about three million dollars in grants and donations for this project. It makes it very enticing for state dollars, so. Which, you know, we've got this under construction now, we've got one more project to kind of get all the way across the county, that's from Concord to the west, and I think there's some state dollars to be had there now as well, now that we've gotten this, this one under the way, and we're starting to spend those dollars that we got a few years ago. So, trail projects, you know, in our, in our five-year recreation plan, any kind of surveys we do, trails are always very high. People want more trails, and they want the ones that we have to be well-maintained. So, that's kind of why we're working on these, and it's part of our strategic goals. Things that we talked about throughout the millage campaign as well, so. Excited to have that project underway. Lots of visible improvements at the Armory Building in the last couple of weeks. You know, the Spark Grant that I've been coming here for, for improvements, so the roof replacement is underway. Tuck pointing was improved last month, so that'll be getting started here soon in this concrete plaza that you can see in the picture. That's, that's installed now, and you know, this is essentially not just a farmer's market site, but a trailhead for, for the trail system as well. So, excited to see some, some action over there as well. Emily kind of already touched on the playground, but that is, you know, we're really excited to have that throughout the fair, but throughout the entire year as well. It's pretty visible. I think it really makes the entrance to Keely Park much more exciting. Some other upcoming projects that we're excited about, we're working on, working with Co-Pro on some bid documents currently. One of them went out to bid last week, which is replacing the Grass Lake tennis courts and pickleball courts there. That's kind of one of the major projects that I would say that, I don't want to say neglect, but a piece of facility that we have that really needs to be improved, and we just haven't been able to figure out a way to do that with grants and things like that. So, we'll be bringing that, those bids back here probably in the next month or two, and recommending that with Park Millage dollars. So, that's a really needed project. We're also putting out to bid the design work for Cascades, so that when we end up raising the money to make the improvements, we'll be pretty much shovel-ready and have that ready to go there, so. May Memorial Day weekend is busy for us when we open up our facilities. Both of our campgrounds, Swains Lake and Pleasant Lake, open for the season. They're basically open through Labor Day. We've had great attendance at our campground so far. Good, good weather for firewood up until this warm spell recently, but the Falls also opened Memorial Day weekend, so we kicked it off with our first of three fireworks shows on Saturday evening. Want to thank Chairman Shotwell for being there and staffing the booth for the Cascades Champions Team. You can see that on the next page here. So, that's something else that's happened in the last handful of months is reigniting the Cascades Champion Team, which is chaired by Chairman Shotwell, and that's the fundraising group to really finish off the campaign to restore the Falls. So, you know, I put in some key points here from the campaign, but, you know, basically, we're approaching a hundred years with the Falls being open. You know, Captain Sparks got us, got us this far, and this group wants to make sure that the Falls is around for another hundred years. So, you know, it's, the park receives just about a half a million visits a year. Our fireworks shows in total, we see about forty thousand people for those three shows in total, so a lot of people enjoying it, and we want to make sure it's around for, for a long time. We've made six-hundred-and-forty-one thousand in improvements since 2018. So, I think when we talk about the campaign, a lot of folks think that, oh, you just made some improvements, or isn't that already done? But, you know, kind of the message we've been trying to get across is we've been making improvements, but there's, there's still several, several things to do to make sure it's around for a while. So, we've got about three and a half million to raise to finish it off, but the good news is we're past fifty percent on that. So, I think it really feels like it's realistic for the first time in a while. So, put some details in here on that, a little chart. We've got some, some marketing materials that were produced recently, so that the chart here kind of explains what the goal is and what the funds would go towards, which is a lot of concrete restoration and then a lot of plumbing work, basically, a new pump house and replacing all the pipes. I'll probably be back in the next month or two with a project agreement for a grant that you all approved that we applied for about a year and a few months ago, the DNR Trust Fund Grant for Minor Mills County Parks. So, we'll have a project agreement here shortly, so we can get started on that work, but that there'll be some significant improvements coming to Minor Mills. And then, I just included our, our live entertainment schedule for our Wednesday nights at the Cascades and our Saturday nights at the Rotary Band Shell, so lots of things, lots of opportunity to see some music in the park this summer, so. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? If there are no questions, I need a motion in support to receive. We have a motion by Snell, supported by Willis. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Okay, next up, administration. We have amendment to the court-appointed services contract to consider.
Good morning. As you may recall, the Public Defender's Office, MIDC, does not cover juveniles and it does not cover abuse and neglect cases, so we are still required to have court-appointed attorneys in the Circuit Court for these items. We do have some turnover in our abuse and neglect. That tends to be a specialty that is difficult to find attorneys in, and unfortunately, we had a turnover earlier this year, so this is the second time this year we've had new attorneys that are coming in. But Circuit Court is wonderful. Teresa Bunch, give a shout out to her, is wonderful at finding other individuals that can assist us in this required service. So, we have a person that left the contract, and we were able to find somebody to fill that place. Since it is required, we are mandated to do it. This is a replacement, so there's no additional fees. This is just replacing somebody that left, so there's no additional cost. They're filling in for the same cost as the previous person, so we're just asking for approval of this new person's contract.
Okay, discussion? I have a couple of questions for you. At what point is a member of our general population considered indigent and qualifies for the use of taxpayer money for this legal services we're paying for?
Well, this is abuse and neglect, so this is through, I believe, DHHS and through probate court, so this is different. These aren't necessarily indigent. These are abused and neglect cases. The indigency comes up in, as far as MIDC, and that determination has been removed from the judiciary, and the Public Defender's Office now handles determination of indigency.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on this? Any discussion? If there's no discussion, we're ready for a motion in support. Motion by Eras Snell, supported by Walz. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? The same? Okay, this will go to the full board. Thank you. We'll move on to item. on to item five, the claims. I need a motion and support to pay the claims. We have a motion by Snell, support by Wallace. Wallace, Willis, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Okay, there we go. Aye. Okay, other minutes? Other minutes? We don't have any. Reporting scheduled for next month, we have IT scheduled next month. Return to public comment. Any public comment? Public comment is closed. Committee member comment? Commissioner Wallace?
I'd just like to acknowledge that Emily is new to the fair this year and she's done an excellent job with organizing and bringing some new ideas. So thank you, Emily, and thank you, Kyle, for your support.
All righty. Any other comment? Meeting adjourned.